Alrighty, so good afternoon, everyone. This is attorney Robin McCoy and attorney Tracy Martin with Political Coffee with Robin and Tracy. And we have our honored guest, Royce Kinnearu. So, welcome, everyone. And you know, we always have our drink of the day. And I, I have the same mug from our last segment, the American flag mug. And I have spring water in there, mixed in there with a little bit of tea, Robles Red Bush Tea and Green Tea. What about you, Tracy?
Oh, I like that. Is that the tea from South Africa or?
Yes, it's, yes, I lived there. While I was in law school, I was there for a semester and I discovered the Robles, the Red Bush Tea while I was there, so.
Very nice, very nice. Well, yes, I'd like to welcome everyone to Political Coffee. And this is our special, Meet the Candidates segment. As attorney McCoy indicated today, our special and honored guest is Royce Kinnearu. Because you know, he is an author, an educator, an expert on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Notice a theme here with our double show today. And now he's running for Detroit City Council for one of the at-large seats. And we're looking forward to talking with Royce Kinnearu. Royce, welcome to the show. I've got my Detroit mug, straight out of Detroit with peach tea. Royce, what did you bring with you today? And thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. I just brought some water with me and I have one of my commemorative mugs that they give you when you speak at some of the government agencies. I spoke for the National Reconnaissance Office. And they gave me a little mug and I got water in it. I need to drink more water, so that's what I got right now.
Oh, that's cool. You guys are, both of you are drinking water. I, well, I'm doing tea. I'm not doing the coffee today because we're going to spill the political tea on why Royce is running for office. Now, Royce, you had run for office before, but you kind of changed your mind. I think that was in 2018. You were a write-in candidate for the US House and the 13th Congressional District, the seat that Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib sits in now. Now, why did you change your mind about that race? And what made you jump into this race today?
Yeah, well, that race was one where I was really interested in getting involved in politics because of the election of a candidate that will go unnamed. And so I said, man, I want to help some candidates and their races. And I was sitting down with some friends of mine and we were going through strengths and weaknesses of different candidates. And they would say, well, Royce, you know how to do this. And they would say, well, Royce, you know how to do that. And then they said, Royce, well, why don't you run? And I said, I hadn't thought about running, but I guess I can. And that was like two weeks before the deadline for the signatures. So, we were unable to get our signature. So, I decided to continue on through the process as a write-in candidate, knowing that, you know, without being on a ballot, it is extremely difficult to win a race unless you are rolling around in the dough. And I was not rolling around in the dough. So, that was a very good learning experience. And like, I think it was Nelson Mandela said, that I don't lose. I either win or I learn.
Okay, that's a great quote. And so here we are in 2021. It must be a calling for you to run for office because you're running for city council. Why Detroit City Council?
Detroit City Council, you know, I love the city so much. You know, after undergrad, I had opportunities to move and go to different places. And I came back home because I love the city so much. And I see it struggling in areas that in my, in my professional life, I have gained a bunch of experience, whether it's education, whether it's diversity and inclusion, whether it's self-help and motivational, personal development. I said, you know what? I can use these skills that I have gained in my professional life to help the city. And so that's why I got into the race. And that's why I think we're going to be very, very successful.
Okay. Fantastic, fantastic. And so the deadline is looming Tuesday, April 20th. That's when everyone has to turn in their petitions, their petition signatures. And how are you, how are you doing on that front?
We are doing phenomenal. We had about 690 at last count. We went into the clerk and I actually got a chance to speak with Clerk Winfrey. And we have to, we got, signed some sheets, got signed on the wrong type of sheet. And so we got our canvases back out right now, getting it done. So, we're gonna probably turn in maybe about 580, maybe close to 600 in the minimum for at-large and city council and the mayor's race and the clerk's race is 500. So, we'll be good.
Oh, that's great.
That's great, that's great. And so, that's interesting because some of the people that you faced in 2018 are going to be in this at-large race for Detroit City Council. I think that's a big question mark, whether or not Brenda Jones is Detroit City Council President, if she's actually gonna run again. And then Janie Ayers has the other seat. Have you been listening to the results of some of these polls that have been coming out? And talking about Coleman Young, who was in that 2018 congressional race with you, that he's polling at the number one spot? What's your take on that?
Well, you know, I am, I, my, my perspective is come all who want to run. The more candidates, it's better for the city, it's better for the race. You get more ideas, you get more different perspectives on what the city needs and just really different perspective. So, Coleman Young polling good, fantastic form. The, the, the primary is in August, so you gotta run. Name recognition is gonna get you so far, but you gotta campaign. And so I've been out knocking on doors. As soon as we get our signatures in, we're gonna start, we're gonna start phone banking. And within the next week, usually, city council candidates and other candidates don't start phone banking as early as we are about to. So, I got people lined up for the phone bank and we're gonna, we're gonna rock and roll. And we're gonna do door-to-door like we've been doing, getting our signatures. So, we've been out in the community and we have a good strategy that's set. So, I'm, I'm excited to see who's gonna run. And like you said, what's gonna happen on the 21st? When, you know, everybody said they gonna run, but when those signatures come in, that's gonna determine who's gonna run and who's gonna have.
Right. That's a whole nother story. But you're confident that you're gonna make it out of that primary? And you're gonna be, you know, running in that general election later this year in November?
Absolutely. Of course, as you know, it's the top four will be going into the general. So, you know, we, we're really confident. You know, my social media imprint is pretty strong. You know, I make sure I post things that are engaging, that are thoughtful. Sometimes I post things that are funny. It's just so that people can get, and I don't have a locked Instagram or a locked Facebook where only your friends and stuff can see. I want the whole world to be able to come.
Everybody, open to everything.
And I want everybody to see who it is that I am. I, you know, implore and ask people, put my name in Google, Google me, see what you see out there. And I want people to know me. So, when I come knocking on your door, I see you at the gas station or wherever in the street that you got an idea about who I am. And if you don't know who I am, I'm gonna try to find you and introduce myself to you and, and tell you about why it is that I'm running and what I think I can do to help the city.
And I see that you graduated from Kettering. Have you, have you been back to Kettering or talked to any of the students there to see if they, anybody wants to help with your campaign?
Well, the, 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 the good part is I am strong in the Alumni Association. The bad part is Kettering was closed about five or six years ago. And there is a new structure there, but I'm strong in the Alumni Committee. And the strategy for me is using your connections, using your committee. So, my Alumni Committee at, for Kettering, my connection with, say, for instance, my University of Iowa Alumni Committee. A lot of volunteers are going to help via virtually. And so it's just really putting together your networks, friends, family, because they know you best and that's where you'll get your support, so.
What about Mary Grove too? Cause I saw in your, in your bio, I saw, you know, for University of Iowa, what, English Literature, African-American Studies, which I, I teach a class on law and African-American experience at ECU. So, I'm definitely big on African-American Studies. And then, so, but Mary Grove, what about you? Are you active with the Alumni Committee from Mary Grove?
Well, I don't even know if there is really a Alumni Committee. I'm sure that there is, but I'm not active in that particular committee. But those that graduated with me, because the program that I was in was called the Griot Program. It was started to get more African-American men into teaching. And so that network of guys, I am still plugged in with, and we talk and see each other all the time. So, those type of networks are really invaluable. Cause these people knew me, we were in class together and they know me in regards to, you know, what type of student I was, what type of person I was and things that I brought to the classroom when we were there studying.
Okay.
Wow. Well, Royce, I see a copy of your latest book, Graduates: Moving From Failure in the Hood to Success, Commencement, and Beyond. And tell us about your experience as an author. Was that your first book? Or where does it fall in the scheme of things? And, you know, what's the premise of that book?
Well, I, I was a contributor for a children's book, probably about four or five years earlier called African-Americans, where they sent me the book and I had to go over some facts and things like that. And so they, Michael Bergen had me as a contributor for that book. And then I wrote this book in 2017. And the premise was always, you know, I had an aha moment when I was in undergrad. I was smart, but I wasn't a good student. And after three years, I flunked out of University of Iowa. And I came back home and this was, cause I'm, a lot of people think I'm like 30 something. I'm like 50, I'm 51, right?
That's very useful because you're a runner.
They say black don't crack, black don't crack.
I am, yeah, yeah, yeah. And so I came back to Detroit for that year that I was out of Iowa. And I remember riding the bus downtown. And I write about this in the book. And it's really one of the reasons why I got into public service. There's a saying that the eyes are the windows to the soul. And I remember riding downtown with all these black and brown people and poor and low-income folks. And I was like, the light is out. Why is this? You know, I'm 19 years old. I've always been a good student. I'm in a position that I've never been in before. And I said, when I get back to Iowa, I'm gonna find out what this is and I'm some way going to try to help. So, when I went back, I majored in Africana Studies and in English. And when I came back, it's that wanting to help black folks and folks in the urban context have better lives is really the public service aspect. And then I wrote about it in my book. And I talk about how that, that success leaves footprints and, and their strategies and principles that all successful people use. It, it doesn't matter if you're black, doesn't matter if you're white, doesn't matter if you're a woman, doesn't matter if you're gay, straight, Jewish, Protestant, what have you. But that if you're willing to sacrifice delayed gratification, if you're willing to have a network of friends who are very, who are very, who will challenge you. If you will be continuously in a learning mode with a growth mindset, that those type of strategies lead to success. If you are good in understanding how to plan and how to goal set, that those type of strategies will help you be successful, whether you're attorney, whether you're educator, whether you're a small business owner or what have you. And so I write about those things in the book. And then I talk about when things started to work for me that I still was learning. I write about when I was in China. I wrote about when I was in Brazil. I wrote about when I was in the UK and what I learned about race, what I learned about gender, what I learned about poverty. Because I want people to understand that race, as we see in our country with the George Floyd trial or the, excuse me, the Derek Chauvin trial.
I know, people do that. I mean, people, it's, it's, well, cause George Floyd is the, the victim, the martyr. He's, to me, he's the central focus, but then the murderer is Derek Chauvin, so.
Yeah, I think people do have to correct themselves on that. And thank you for doing that. Because, you know, if that was something innocent that you did, because I think you're approaching it, I'm just speculating from the premise that, oh, it's George Floyd and getting justice for George Floyd. But we have to be careful with that because some people who are against justice and social justice, they have put George Floyd on trial.
On trial.
And they're going back into his background and trying to dirty him up, you know?
Trying to make him responsible for his own death.
Right, you know, because.
His own murder.
Right, right, right. So, that's interesting. But what did you learn about race in your travels to the UK and Brazil and China? Could you share that with us?
Yeah.
Bit from your book?
It, what is so powerful? I think the most powerful thing is that the same problems we have here, everywhere where there are dark people, they have the same problems, undereducated and overpoliced.
Okay.
Oh, undereducated and overpoliced.
Now, why do you think that is? Is that because of why?
I think that is because the history part about it, you can read about it. It's a book called How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X.
I have that, I have that. That's on my, my, I have my stack of books to read. I also have the one, Eloquent Rage by Brittany Cooper. I got my whole group. I'm working on it, I'm reading another.
You gotta read it. And so he really talks about how white supremacy and white centrality, as it moved from Europe during the Enlightenment Age, went to all of these places, Australia, UK, Brazil, where you have majority populations or populations of white folks that are in power. And everywhere they are, this racial category and stratification occurs where the darkest people are at the bottom of the social and economic level. And let me, I saw, like, there was a post that you and I were on, Tracy, and Lamar Lemon was on. And we were talking about, is that, I think somebody made a comment that racism was worse in the UK than it was in America. And I agree with that person.
Oh, that's the actor, the actor that was on, the brother from, you know, the, the story about Fred Hampton.
Fred Hampton.
Oh, you're talking about Daniel Kaluuya.
Kaluuya.
Right. Judas and the Black Messiah. Oh, is he an excellent actor?
He is great, he is great.
Yeah. So, what, I mean, do you think, take me back. Do you think that racism in the UK is worse than the USA or is it about the same?
Well, first, I would preface that with letting the audience know. How long were you in the UK? Like, how long did you stay there?
I have been to the UK now about 11 or 12 times.
Wow.
Funny enough, attorneys, I, my first time over, I was brought there to speak by the National Black Crown Prosecutors Association.
Oh, that's interesting. Hey, was that recorded? Was that taped?
Um, this was back in 2004, so that one wasn't taped. But two, but I do have some that were taped, that I did for the Department of Justice around that time. But anyway, I have, for four years, I went over, in the course of four years, I had been there like maybe eight times. And I spoke. And, you know, I spent Christmas there, I have good friends there. And in my humble opinion of being there those times, I was just there the summer of 2019, is that it is worse. It's sort of like America maybe in, in, in the 70s, right? Where you're just coming out of the civil rights movement, but you still got some serious problems with, with, you know, the Nixon policies and things of that nature. And when I was saying to Lamar Lemon, I said, listen, Lamar, man, from my experience, it's worse. I mean, I was at the, the British Museum and I was getting a ticket. And I remember coming up to the counter and said, excuse me, can I get a ticket? And the, one of the persons that were there, a white individual was not like paying attention and not even, they were just standing there right in my face, but they wouldn't, wouldn't do anything. And then a person came over to say, okay, yeah, yeah, we could get you a ticket. That person was like, she was totally ignoring me. And I saw things like that over and over again. And a lot of my friends, the majority of them were attorneys and still are attorneys. And they work for what's called the CPS, the Crown Prosecution Service. And one of my good friends, as a matter of fact, her name is Grace Ananiewo. She just got promoted to be in charge of all of the prosecutors in the UK.
Wow, now that is fantastic. You know, I've gotta digress for just a moment because we're talking about the United Kingdom. And, you know, I was all set to go to the UK right when the pandemic hit for business and pleasure purposes. And, you know, we know that the Duke of Edinburgh was funeralized today. And you know, what I got, what I find interesting though is this. There was a reporter that was, you know, in London. And yet they had this national moment where everybody was supposed to pause. And he said, nobody paused. People were just going on about their business. And he said, in fact, there's a protest going on right now and it's to support Julian Assange. And the protest just continued through what was supposed to have been this national pause where everybody was supposed to pause in remembrance of Prince Philip. You know, I thought it was pretty cool, but I'm an anti-monarchist. And I do think that once the Queen departs, that, you know, the monarchy will probably, will probably fall. This whole thing with Meghan Markle is quite interesting too. But yeah, I think I was in the camp, Royce, that believed that, you know, what's happening in the UK in terms of discrimination or racism, racism is about the same. And my point was that, you know, in the United Kingdom, they're more progressive than the United States because they abolished slavery considerably sooner than the United States did. And there have just been some things that I perceive as being more progressive happening. And hey, but I think that your, your points are all fascinating to me. And you mentioned this actor, Daniel Kaluuya, who came up in the media recently. You know, I don't know if you're familiar with Anthony Mackie, who plays Falcon in the, you know, Marvel Cinematic Universe. Well, he was talking with someone about, you know, all these, you know, black actors from the UK are coming over here taking jobs, black American actors. But his point was Kaluuya and some other black actors from the UK were saying, we just don't get the opportunities. We don't get the opportunities over there. And so that's why we're doing it.
Right, I would wanna see, you know, again, as a professor, I would wanna see more of like, what is the population of black people in America versus the UK? I mean, I don't know that it needs, racism is everywhere. So, I don't know if it's a matter of us needing to compete. I mean, the oppressor was, you know, started in Europe and went to the, our African continent and raped and pillaged and colonized. And so, I mean, I know for us in America, we, we, you look on the TV every day, you see black people being brutalized. So, I know a lot of us here in America would say, no, we are experiencing racism. But I mean, I wouldn't, again, I would wanna talk to the folks in the UK. They probably got some stories to tell as well. Not as graphic as, as us being brutalized. But I know I lived in France and I lived in Paris. And there was a lot of, there was racism against African immigrants. And I'm sitting here and I'm like hearing Muslims and stuff. And I'm sitting here and listening to the French people talking about the, oh, these people come here. And in, in the 60s, they welcomed people from all over the, the countries where they had colonized because they had a lot of jobs and not enough workers. And then in the 90s, I was there in 95, they had, the, the, things had shifted. So, then there were less jobs. And then they're like, these immigrants are coming here and they're taking our jobs. And I'm like, okay, when y'all were in Algeria and y'all were, did you guys? Cause they're saying the immigrants need to learn how to wear the hijab and they need, or not, they shouldn't wear the hijab. They should, they should wear a t-shirt and jeans like us French, which that's, that's them stealing off from Americans anyway. But I mean, y'all got to learn to talk about how immigrants coming to your country need to be French and need to be a certain way. When you went all over the world, raped and pillaged and colonized, and it's the same for the UK. So, I don't know that it's a matter of us competing. You know, I do, I understand, black folks in America, we do want priority when it comes to acting jobs. But there are also some very superb actors from all over the world, black folk, black folk, we have brilliance all over the world. So, I don't think it should be a competition. I think it should be a matter, there's enough of the pie for all of us. There's reparations overdue for all of us, you know?
Right, well, I think one of the points that Daniel Kaluuya made was that, you know, in terms of Judas and the Black Messiah, there really weren't a whole lot of black American actors that even auditioned for that role. And so that's why he got the role of Fred Hampton. Right, you should check out that interview. But Royce, I wanna ask you about this. Did you see the Oprah interview with Meghan Markle and Prince Harry? And if you did, what was your take on it?
I did see that interview. And, you know, my experience, and it's funny, I watched the interview. My take on it was that, based on my personal experience of being in the UK, there was gonna be, I knew there was gonna be some pushback for her at some point. There was, it seemed, a little honeymoon period in regards to how they treated her. But at some point, I think that those underlying feelings in regards to black inferiority, I'm probably sure there's some gender bias in there as well, that she was gonna have a problem. And I really commend them because walking away from the, the monarchy and that support, that's a lot of money. Okay? I mean, it's like stupid money. I mean, it's like generational money. And so walking away from that was really courageous for them to do. But in regards to my feelings about Prince Harry, I mean, he's rolling with his boo. And, you know, I'm, I'm down, I really, really appreciate and respect that because he was like, listen, we can't live like this. You know, they went to Canada and then from, you know, that, the, the, the crowd pulled the, the support when they were in Canada. And during COVID times, so they were like, you know what? We gotta get to somewhere where we can be safe. And so they went to LA where everybody can be safe if you've got enough connections. And they did that and, you know, hats off to them and I'm, I'm glad they're safe, I'm glad they're safe.
Right, and I mean, I would say, I mean, you know, I'm all over the Royals. I'm, I'm, I came about during Princess Diana, so I'm team Princess Diana all the way. But I, I follow the Royals, I watch The Crown, I, I have been watching the funeral. I think that the death of Prince Philip is actually the, is the beginning of the death of the monarchy, you know? And, you know, I've talked to some folks that like, they're like, you're spending millions of dollars each year to go to the monarchy. And so I think that the, the Royals, they need to get it together. They need to address all these issues that, that Meghan raised. And I think that Meghan and Harry are smart to come over here and do what they can. Cause you know, you know, people just assume, oh, yes. But when, that they're gonna have that check from the British people. But I mean, once the Queen goes, it's supposed to be King Charles. And people don't have a whole bunch of love for, for Charles after him, at the way he did Diana and everything. And so, and then some people thought, a lot of people thought that they killed Diana off because she was with an Arab man and that her being alive was gonna hinder him from getting back with Camilla. I don't know, I wasn't there, but I know when I watched the Oprah interview and they started talking about the safety of Archie, I was just like, oh, that's making me think that something, that maybe they did do something to Diana. Okay, I don't know. But anyway, back to you, Royce, you running for office. I know we did a segue.
That's okay.
And we, we talked about your experience in the UK, but what about your experience? What do you think about your experience in Brazil and China? What have you learned from those experiences that things would, would help you as a candidate here in Detroit?
Thank you. That, that education really is the key. That education really, really is the key to changing people's life opportunity. One of the things that you will find in Brazil is that after you get to a certain age, like maybe high school age, they don't have enough spots in schools for kids to go. It's not like us where here, we got a spot for you in public school. But they don't in, in Brazil. And it, and you see that the darker skinned people have the hardest time. In, in, in the UK, they have a spot for you, but they're having the same problem with expulsion, suspension and writing office referrals for black kids that they, they have here in the United States. And what I learned as a fourth grade teacher, fifth grade teacher, seventh grade, eighth grade teacher. And now, you know, I do two things at one time. I do my DNI work with the federal agencies in different municipalities.
What's DNI? What does that stand for?
Diversity and Inclusion.
Okay, okay, got you, okay.
Yeah, and so I do that, yeah, absolutely, I'm, I'm, I'm here to help. Diversity and Inclusion, work with those guys. And then I also do my work in K-12 education, which also sometimes I jump into higher ed, where I teach what's called social and emotional learning with trauma-informed practices. And I've been doing that for several years. And it's basically teaching teachers how to teach every child. And so it's come into the classroom, sometimes they're not aware of their emotions, how to manage their emotions, how to make good decisions, how to work. how to make good decisions, how to work well in groups. So along with the, the content, we found through research that kids that have strong, social and emotional learning core competencies do better in school. They do better when they graduate. Uh, they're able to transition easier into the workforce, to the military, into higher education. And that they are uh, uh, more likely to be employed by the age twenty-five. All of these benefits, they, back in the day, they would call them the soft skills, right? And so I teach teachers those things right now. And listen, when I go through at the school and I teach teachers these things and they employ them, suspensions goes down and academic achievement goes up. So in regards to my candidacy in a district like DPS CD, you know, what I'm gonna do as an ancillary deal as a part of my time on city council. And I'm gonna say, listen, if you are within eight mile Lhasa, the river and Alter Row, and you are a school and you are interested in learning, um, social and emotional learning with trauma-informed practice, I will, look, here's the schedule. Here are the dates for the month of April. I will do this uh, virtual, uh, PD, uh, or blah, 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 to help those teachers. Because what the research says is that, uh, supplies are, educational supplies are important. Educational structure as regards to buildings, uh, your computers and all those important. But they say the number one thing that impacts uh, educational outcome is the training and the uh, expertise of the educator. They say that that turns the needle, that impacts learning more for kids than what, what building they're in, what uh, supplies and what materials and what equipment they have. And so what I wanna do as an ancillary program is to help people, uh, in the schools to be able to, 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 to teach kids better. That's, that's something that I can do that I know that works. And then the other, yeah, and then the other thing that's really important is I wanna have a, a program that's another ancillary program. And what it is, it's, it's, it's called the ISP program. And it's in, it is means individualized success plan. What I wanna do is I wanna, and it comes from my time as an educator with the IEP, Individual Educational Plan.
Right, right.
Right. And then also they have something now called the IRIP, which is an individualized reading instructional plan that came into play because of the passing of the third grade reading law.
Yes, that's a terrible thing. You know, so I want to circle back, you know, we've talked about your travels to the UK and to um, Brazil, which I understand they're having a lot of race problems in Brazil. But China, you know, China, the Chinese government, President Xi Jinping says that they have virtually eradicated poverty. Now Detroit still has a humongous issue with poverty when it comes to these water shut offs. And, you know, because of the pandemic, now evictions have been exacerbated. You know, Detroit uh, at one time was a city that um, included um, or, or featured a lot of um, single-family homes and we had a high home ownership rate. Not anymore. Do you think your background, your travels to China, and I don't know what you were doing there exactly, but would that um, help you in your quest for city council in terms of helping, uh, the constituents of uh, really Detroit? Because if you're running for at large, that's the entire city. That doesn't district, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Listen, um, what's so important, there's a book that I read called um, it's called The Color of Money, The History of Black Banks and the Wealth Gap. And one of the things that it talked about was poverty and the wealth gap. And we know that Detroit's poverty rate is in between, depending on when you look at this statistics, is in between thirty and forty percent. That is humongous, right? And so with that ISP program that I wanna do, I wanna help people put together a goal. I wanna say, use that Stephen Covey, uh, Seven uh, Habits of Highly Effective People and start with the goal, the end in mind. And, and, and ask them, okay, what is your goal? What do you want? Because the basis of my candidacy and why I'm running is to make life better for people. If we want a better Detroit, we have to have stronger families and stronger individuals. So that ISP program is going to help people to put together goals for themselves. Well, Royce, I wanna do this. I wanna do A. I wanted to B. I wanted to C. And then what I wanna do is based on what your goals are, as a, as a congress, as a council person, I wanna assist you with your goals. And we know that the main goal that people have in the city of Detroit is they don't have enough money. So we have to upscale, we have to train people. I was with a buddy of mine last night who was like, one of the highest ranking people, African-Americans in LinkedIn. And he lives here, and, and he lives here in Novi, and he was actually running the office here. Uh, and he was talking about how LinkedIn loves to support those who want to upscale and reskill themselves to get better jobs. So my, you know, my mind was spinning. And so I was like, whoa, really? So you can create a program then where you say, okay, guys, if you are, are HVAC and you wanna move up to get three certifications, uh, let's see how much money LinkedIn will give to this program to help you upscale. And listen, if you can go from making fifteen bucks an hour to twenty-five bucks an hour, that changes your entire life. And so what I wanna do is help people put together plans for themselves and their families where they are able to get better uh, uh, employment opportunities. And so we're gonna, the way that that's gonna have to happen, everything that they're gonna need, it's not gonna come from city council. There are faith-based org- now, here's one of the things that I learned from going to all these community meetings. There are some banging programs in the city of Detroit that you've never heard of. I went to a program, listen, I went to a program, uh, 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 a meeting that Keith Williamson's having. And they were saying, yeah, uh, they'll get, they'll pay your closing house for your, uh, closing, closing costs for your house. If you're in um, uh, section eight housing right now, they'll pay this amount of money. I was like, what? I said, who knows about this? And they were like, well, nobody. I said, have you guys gone to section eight housing and just put like flyers in the door to let people know that this exists? It's like, well, no, we haven't done this. I'm like, come on, man. And so those type of things of being a, a repository of what the research, reset, resources are that connect with your particular, uh, goal-setting plan for you is what I wanna help um, uh, citizens of the city of Detroit do. So you put together a plan and you say, well, Royce, right here, I need childcare and I'm having a problem. So what I'll do in that process is look for all the places that will assist you, whether it be with funds, whether it be with a cheaper uh, childcare place. Because you, I'm sure you guys know how many women have come out of the workforce during the pandemic because they have an affordable childcare.
Right. Yeah, we've also seen, um, you know, we've been doing some programming uh, on expungement. We have the new expungement law that went into effect on April eleventh. And, you know, we, I, there was, I participated in a virtual fair. And it's, it's great that we have the law because now you have, you go from, cause I've been doing it for about seven years where I do the forums and the fairs. And most of the time, you're telling people that they weren't eligible because it was one felony, two misdemeanors. Now it's three felonies and it's unlimited misdemeanors. However, Clean Slate Lakeshore, their backlog, they're recruiting more attorneys to do pro bono work. And I know Judge Thomas, uh, my mentor, who we call her the expungement queen. I'm one of the princesses. I guess Tracy and I are princesses. So she's worked, she's been talking to city council. So, so, so I would, I would say, she said she was talking to a rep from city council because you need, you, you know, this is a, a new law and it's more complicated. You need to have lawyers in play to help people get their records cleared. I can't tell you how many people call me every day asking, are they eligible? And now they're eligible, but then do they have money to pay a lawyer? And private attorneys or attorneys that work and do criminal defense, we're already doing individual defense. So it's a big ask to ask a lot of us to do pro bono. Um, so we're trying to get more attorneys. Like I have, I have twenty pro bono folks from the last event that I'm still, I've, I gotta connect them with attorneys to help them. So if you were to get on city council, even on your way, what, what could you do as far as helping to raise money to pay attorneys? To, to, to help folks get a job and be able to take care of themselves and their family?
Right. So, so here, here's the deal. The, the, the deal is this, is that one of the things I'm saying is that all of the resources aren't gonna come from city council. And a lot of the things that city council, when you, when laws come across and policies are, are submitted from city council, they, they help certain people or certain groups of people. But it may not be your problem that they're helping. I mean, you, you can have three years where city council doesn't touch anything that may help you, right? And so there has to be someone somewhere, and I want that person to be me that says, well, this isn't, this is part of my document and my work on city council. But look, I know that Wayne County has this program, or I know that the state of Michigan has this program. There has to be people who have a high profile, who serve as a repository for the resources that come from the federal government, that come from the state, that come from the county, and that come from the city that will benefit Detroiters. And if you know that information, then it could be anything. Say, for instance, the laptops. All of the laptops didn't come from DPS. Some people got nonprofits to, to donate certain laptops. So I think it's the report, the resourcefulness of me being a teacher, uh, of being a classroom teacher where, listen, if we didn't have it, we gonna get, we gonna get the, we gonna get the pencils.
You don't know how to find the resources, so you could be the Detroit City Council Resource Channeler for the constituents of Detroit. That's great. And there is a, there is a hope for Detroit in terms of, if not eradicating poverty, uh, reducing it. That, that is something that could be accomplished.
Absolutely. I, I really believe that, and here's the other thing, ladies, is that's very important. That is a part of my platform, is that how is it that we address not only the poverty problem, but the functional illiteracy problem? You guys as attorneys know, fifty percent of people that are in jail cannot read, period.
Or they have disabilities. Like I, cause I do educational advocacy and I had a young man I just worked with and they were trying to give him all these different labels. We found out he had dyslexia, dyscalculia. And, you know, we got him the right supports and he's only two classes away from graduating in June. Had we not gotten that specialized assessment of him, he would have been, it, it would have, it was a hot mess, you know?
It's, it's, listen, it is education and what we're dealing with, we know that we're dealing with uh, um, generational poverty on one side, but we're also dealing with generational illiteracy. And they are working together. One is being addressed and the other isn't being addressed. And so I was working with Detroit Parent Network with their third grade reading law, um, discussing ways that they can address that IRIP uh, document to help their kids read better. And I was giving them, um, bec- when we were talking about, it was to help the kids. But the parents at the end, when it was question and answer time, they said, Royce, I really wanna help my kid, but I have a hard time reading.
Right. And you know, you just wonder like, how do people go through school and get a, you know, a high school diploma? You know, they can't read, they're functionally illiterate. It's through social promotions. And we know, you mentioned the third grade reading law. We know that, you know, they're trying to figure out how many uh, prison beds to come up with. If these kids don't read by third grade, that's a prison bed in the future, based on who's not reading by uh, grade three, which I think is a travesty. But we're running out of time and I wanna get your take on crime. You know, um, it seems like because of the pandemic, we've got a lot more crime. There are so many shootings happening, not just in Detroit, but all across America. Um, you know, what's your take on crime um, as a, a future city council member, if you were to win elections?
Absolutely. Well, you know, when I was out knocking on doors, uh, when I asked people, what are your top three? And their top three was crime. And, and really for me, um, crime is, there are people that have, that are, you know, psychopaths and have issues where they're criminally minded. But what strikes for me, especially when you look at people that are in jail and look at African-American people that are in jail, many of those crimes aren't the psychopath crimes. They are the crimes where they were uh, boosting uh, VCRs or that they were selling some weed here. Or they were trying to uh, make some type of money because their life opportunities were decreased because they weren't educated and they didn't have opportunities that they can use in the workplace to generate a reasonable uh, life opportunities for themselves. So for me.
A connection between the crime and the poverty. You can eradicate the crime, the poverty rather, the crime could be eradicated as well.
Yep. The crime, uh, the unemployment, they all go together to impact the crime. And so of course, we know the stuff that we need to do in regards to uh, policing, how it needs to be reformed. But see, I'm the type of guy, I want to have you prepared so you never have to come into contact with police.
Right, that's, yeah.
Sometimes it's inevitable. I mean, you know.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, it's inevitable. So I mean, you know, Berkeley, uh, the city of Berkeley on California is now pulling all of their armed police from patrol. So that means there won't be any armed police uh, handling any traffic stops. I mean, what, you know, what's your take? Do you think the, the city of Detroit should go the same way? I have a family member who actually is a civilian member of DPD. The individual just handles like traffic issues. That's a person who would probably be, you know, handling patrol. Do you think that's something the city of Detroit should go to too, so that we can avoid another Dante Wright situation?
Yeah, you know, for me, you know, I, I believe that we should have people that like that situation that is occurring in Berkeley, we should have more of them. But I am, I'm, I, I, and I wanna be very clear, I'm not a defund the policer. I mean, I don't understand how you can have a urban area, you can have.
I know, that's, yeah, we just interviewed Sheriff Clayton about it. I interviewed Sergeant Rush. I mean, I have a program I started back in twenty fourteen, What to Do and Stop By the Police. And like that whole defunding police, I'm like, where did that come from? That sounds like it came from somebody in the suburbs. Cause most of the people.
It's not always about defunding the police. It's about switching to the concept of public safety. You know, so um, maybe that's something that uh,
That is something that I'm interested in.
Calls their headquarters a public safety headquarters, but it's really operating more on the traditional police model. Does Detroit need to um, innovate when it comes to policing in the community?
I, I think that everywhere it needs to innovate in regards to policing. I believe that, and I am absolutely pro-police. I believe they have a, a hard job. I know uh, people that are uh, patrolmen. I know people that are in supervision. Um, you know, I've, I've got a chance to meet Chief Craig on several occasions. And, and it is a very, very difficult job. And so, you know, I would, I would, I would love to have more people doing the community policing. Uh, many of them, uh, you don't need to, to have armed. If you're doing traffic stops, if you're doing, I mean, if somebody is selling lemonade on a corner without a um, without a, a license, you don't need to send the uh, mechanized robots and the bomb explode to, to, to get a little girl who's selling Girl Scout cookies on the corner. That's too much, that's too much firepower for what you need. I want them in the places where they need to be. I wanna take that little, you know, s- security guard work that they do, give it to somebody else. Give it to mental health professionals, give it to uh, community partners and let them do the work that they need to go out and do so that it can keep us safe. And when people know that, you know, uh, Detroit police is, will be there in ninety seconds, uh, crime is gonna go down that way as well.
Right. Well, I know what you're saying about being pro-police. I'm pro-good police. I'm not pro-KKK, Derek Chauvin police. No, no, no. Less of them, we need less of the KK police that are out there brutalizing black people. Now, the young Hispanic boy in Chicago, okay? Not even Adam, you know, no. Okay. So I'm sorry, Tracy, go ahead. What were you saying?
Well, uh, Royce, you said that when you've talked to people on the campaign trail that uh, they, they list their top three issues. You just named one of them, crime. What are the other two issues that are top on the minds of Detroiters?
Education, the schools, K-12 education, Detroit Public Schools.
Even though that's not really the province of city council, but it seems like politicians, every politician that we've interviewed to talk to, they always mention education. And what's the other issue, the third issue? And what's the other issue, the third issue?
There are some people that, it, it was a lot of different stuff and it, and it kind of was different with some people. Some people talked about the cleanliness of the city, some people talked about services, whether it be streetlights, whether it be garbage pickup, whether it be clean alleys. And so a lot of people, whether it was speed bumps, so it's a lot of public services, right? That are, that are on people's minds as well.
Well, that's interesting that you mentioned the speed bumps because there was another candidate running for city council, not, not in your race, but in a district race. And the individual, it was ML Eric, I'll name who it was, mentioned about police taking shortcuts through technology. You know, they, they're policing through technology and he mentioned one of the ways is through speed bumps. I want to get your take on technology. You know, you're a guy who's an author, educator, expert, you know, you're a government contractor, you're dealing with NASA folks. What do you think about the wave of technology and policing today? Does it need to be scaled back or, and specifically what's your take on facial recognition technology? DPD uses it now. And city council approved the contract last September 2020.
It sure did. It concerns me. I mean, I, I have to be honest because when you talk about technology, you have to recognize there is nothing secure. You know, if you got the right kid in, in the basement, in, in Spain, they can break into this Zoom call that we're having right now if they want to.
We got a password, so it's, they're not supposed to.
Yeah, yeah, they're not supposed to, but from what I understand about technology, everything is fair game. But in regards to, in regards to facial recognition, that concerns me because those systems, whether they, they may have, you know, ten different levels of redundancy. The, I've also heard that if you're talking about African American people or you're talking about people of color, that it doesn't always work right. And so I'm like, listen, if you're going to put Siri in control of writing people tickets, then it has to work for everybody the same. And if it's not equitable, then we have to rethink how it is that we're using this and how much power and weight that we give to it. You know, I love techno, listen, I'm a technology guy, I love technology. But I don't want it in control of my life to where it gives you power to take away the rights and freedoms of people where they have no recourse. You know what I mean? So for, for, for that one, you know, I, I, it, it concerns me and I, and I would want to get in there more because I've heard of the, 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 the contract. I've heard about how it's being used, I heard about, you know, when Congresswoman Tlaib went in and spoke with Chief Craig and she said some things about, about how it was being used and that, you know, could the white guys use it to see black people and things of that nature? So I understand all the arguments and the contention, but I'll tell you, you know, straight up, the use of technology, it concerns me. I, I, I will have to dig deeper into that particular contract and how that center works before I, I would say something a hundred percent. But I'll, I'll tell you for sure that it, it concerns me in the way that it, it's used.
Wow, great. Well, we're running out of time. If someone wants to find out more about your campaign or volunteer, how would they get in touch with your campaign?
Absolutely. Well, right now you can go and you can go either to my Facebook page, my Facebook campaign page, which is Royce, the number four Detroit City Council. Our webpage is going to go live probably within the next seven days and it is voteroys.com. Very easy, very simple. You can put my name in Google and you will see all of the different social media platforms. I check them all every day, hour in the morning, hour at night, couple, you know, minutes during the day. And so that's how they can get in contact with me. And I'm looking forward to the race, I'm looking forward to meeting as many Detroiters as I possibly can. I, I mean, I'm really, like I said earlier before we really came, I'm having more fun than I thought I was going to have meeting Detroiters from all different parts of the city. And I'm looking forward to be able to help, especially with, with the, the goal setting and bringing resources from different areas to people to help them eradicate and deal with the problem with education and employment. And if we can do that, we can really do some things to improve our city.
Yeah, I think that's great. And if you send us your platforms, we can share them, put them up, make them a part of this video. And I, yeah, I love your energy and I, yeah, I definitely, I was speaking about that education piece because I worked as an educational advocate, I worked, we were at the juvenile court, we were doing, representing kids on neglect and delinquency. And then we were doing education and that, that is such a big deal. You know, working with general ed students, special ed students. And then like you saw, like we saw, sometimes it's the parents, the parents need the right supports. So they're in the best position to help the children.
Right, right. We need wraparound services. They did, if you're familiar with waiting for Superman and Jeffrey Kennedy in New York, I think it's the Harlem Project. One of the things that they found is that if you can get wraparound services for parents as well as wraparound services for kids at the same time that you can increase academic outcomes. And so that's one of the things that we, you have to recognize is that mama ain't worried about helping little Johnny with the Pythagorean theorem if their lights are shut off. They're trying to get their lights back on.
Right. Juanita Cano talks about a lot of these issues in the conspiracy to destroy our black boys, talking about what Tracy was talking about too, like by the third grade, they can decide where you, you know, your prison bed and it shouldn't be like that. We need to overturn this school to prison pipeline and stop, you know, we, with the group that I was working with, we were doing as educational advocates, we were overturning suspensions and expulsions and we need more educational advocates. You can be a layperson and be an educational advocate or an attorney. There's the COPO, the Council for Parents Advocates and Attorneys. We need more, we need, need more advocates for our children because these are our babies. And if we don't pour into them, you know, there are other places that will and they're not going to pour positive stuff into them, they're going to pour prison and jail and all kinds of negativity. So.
You know, Robyn, I agree with you that this candidate, Royce Kinnabrew, has great energy. It will serve him well out on the campaign trail and connecting with the voters and he is a runner. I'm curious to know though, before we close, you know, we've talked about some heavy, serious issues, you know, from racism to, you know, police killings and police reform to crime. What do you like to do in the downtime that you might be able to carve out? What are some of your hobbies and interests in a quick nutshell?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a workout fan and I'm a, I'm a, a youth track coach as well.
Oh, I was wondering, yeah, that's great. Now I walk, I want to know too.
Yeah. Oh, did you? Wow. Yeah. So those, those, those are, those are the things. And that, that gives me a lot of joy being to invest one-on-one with kids. I always want to have a, a ability to connect with kids one-on-one because when you make those relationships, especially as a coach or a teacher or, you know, whether it's a youth pastor or something like that, that you have an opportunity to really change the trajectory of a kid's life. It's not the stuff that the kids need. It is the impact of an adult that has information that could help kids be successful and paying attention to kid. We call it unconditional positive regard. You know, loving on that kid just because of who it is that they are, not because they are, you know, a great runner or great in spelling or anything like that, but just because they're one of God's creatures. And that, that type of connection will help kids be able to kind of focus themselves and be more successful and diligent in, in, in all their, all their life endeavors. So.
I like that better than the concept of tough love. That's great. Well, we've been talking with Royce Kinnabrew, he's a candidate for Detroit City Council. He's the, says he's the resource guy and he wants to design individual success plans for Detroiters. Thank you so much, Royce, for coming off the campaign trail and talking with us on Political Coffee's Meet the Candidate. Hopefully you can come back when you have time and give us some update about your campaign.
Yes, and I, yes, and again, I've had my American flag mug. And no, Royce, you have your mug, Tracy, you have yours. So yes, thank you for joining us. Yeah, we definitely would like an update and definitely love your energy. I mean, I know it's definitely working with kids and, I mean, Dr. Juwanta Kanjupu talks about black folk having an energy like it's called verb. I can see you've got that verb. And I mean, I think that it's, it's something that we need because Detroit is depressed. That community is a depressed, it shouldn't be. Detroit is like little Africa, it should not be like in a depressed state that it's in. It should, it should not. You, you have so many talents and resources of black people here and, and it should not be like it is.
I agree. I agree. That's why I'm running for city council.
Yep. Yep, good luck.
All right. Take care.
See you later.
Bye, everybody. When we'll see you next week, we'll have Meet the Candidate again.
Yep.